A 3:00 PM session for the November 23, 2021, meeting of the Henry County Board of School of Supervisors to order. I'd like to welcome all of our visitors. Remind you that if you want to address the board, you must sign up seven days in advance of this meeting to be put on the agenda. The county administrator is the contact person for the board. However, the public may address the board under the Agenda item, matters presented by the public later in the meeting. Again, welcome everyone. Thank you for coming out and participating in your county government. Our first item of business will be Agenda item number five, the Items of Consent. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Items of Consent be approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six zero, Jennifer. Agenda item number six, the Report on the Delinquent Tax Collection Efforts. We have with us County Treasurer Scott Grandstaff. Scott, welcome.
Good afternoon. This is a report as of October 29, 2021. Personal property collection, we've collected 94.71% of the 2020 personal property tax. The amount collected during the month was $26,826. Real estate collection as of October 29, we've collected 96.20% of the 2020 real estate taxes. The amount collected during the month was $99,963. Since the 1st of January 2021, tax has collected $979,074. Our debt set off collected so far this year has been $117,539. Our VRW stops through today, November, we've had 39 stops collected.
Does anyone have any questions with Mr. Grandstaff? Thank you. Agenda item number seven, we'll have a monthly update from the Martinsville Henry County Economic Development Corporation. We have with us Mark Heath. Mark, welcome.
Chairman, members of the board. You have our monthly report for November. I'm not going to review that with you, other than a couple of things. And then Valerie Harper, our Director of Business, and Sarah Hyde is our Tourism Director and Director of Talent Development. We'll come and present a couple of videos that their divisions have produced recently, which I think you might interest. A few things I do want to call your attention to. Valerie's Division, this is coming Saturday to be Small Business Saturday. It's the second time we've held this. Valerie developed a very good promotion last year where the EDC provides a $10 gift certificate, or coupon rather, for folks to take to restaurants and use in our community, in city and county. Last year, there were 422 of these given out. This year, there are 532. So it's a great opportunity for folks in our community to go and experience a restaurant that they might not otherwise have been to, or maybe even have tasted. And Sarah's Vision of the Talent Development. Most of you have been following, most of us have been following, the Five Points. Housing Project, Workforce Housing in Uptown is really coming along. There are now five homes in place there. It's a really good project. And also, we call your attention to the monthly unemployment rate. As you'll see, Henry County is now, once again, below 5%. They're our own corner of the country. After Valerie and Sarah's come up and present their videos, if you have any questions for any of us.
So I think they've combined our videos together. But I'll just introduce the first, and I think Sarah will follow after that. Mine is a video that we put together as part of a series of videos that we have to encourage locals to shop locally at small businesses, but also to encourage even other small businesses to support each other. So that'll be the first one that we go through. And we themed it Small Business, Big Community.
The next set will be several short videos. We did, in the past, we have worked on a program called Mix, Modern Industry Exchange, where we take school counselors and teachers into our industry and show them what modern industry looks like, as well as the type of skills that employers are looking for when the young people are graduating through and looking for employment. And with the pandemic, we weren't able to go into industry in 2020. So we did some videos featuring press bots and Basset Furniture, and we're not able to go in again in 2021. So this year, we did videos featuring Virginia Glass, Virginia Mira, Hard Eye, Motocam Foods, the Career Academy at Henry County Schools, and Active Wall. And so we'll show a couple of those short videos as well. Does anybody have any questions here?
Good job.
Thank you. The Active Wall video, I think, did show, because it was about a minute and a half, so it's a little bit longer. But it's showing, you know, all the videos were to show products, unique products that are made here, that are used all over the United States and possibly the world, that are made locally here by our great folks. So that's kind of what we were highlighting.
Now, are these going to be on your website?
They are. They're currently on our social media. We launch them once a week during Manufacturing Month in October. And then we'll upload them to our site, and they're on our YouTube. And then we also launched a job board last week that is an aggregate job board, so it doesn't require any extra labor. On the industry part, or on our part, Shemura, which is the Economic Development Data Subscription Service, has a real-time platform that has helped with us, and we had it custom-built to work on our site. So it will pull jobs that are listed online, and it will take them down when they're filled, so it's not adding any work on anybody else. So that's now live on Marcus Willmey as well.
We've also added these to our social media platforms on the county side. Should we push them?
Great. Very nice. Next, we'll take Agenda item number eight, Financial Matters. We had one addition that was added to the board's packet, and it will be 8H. 8A, an award of contract referencing two-way radios for the sheriff's office. Mr. Hall.
Sheriff Perry is asking the board to award a contract in the amount of $203,398 to Motorola Solutions for the purchase of 90 portable radios. These radios will be assigned to officers at the new adult detention center, and funding for this purchase is included in the current operating budget. Sheriff Perry is here. Should you have any questions?
Okay, the board has background paperwork on this as well. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we award a contract in the amount of $203,398 to Motorola Solutions for portable radios for the sheriff's office.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six zero, Jennifer. 8B, an award of contract referencing detection scanner for the sheriff's office. Mr. Hall.
Sheriff Perry is asking the board to award a contract in the amount of $169,000 for the purchase of a second Intercept Contraband Detection Scanner. The contract would be awarded to Tech 84 Incorporated, and it would be installed at the new adult detention center. The price includes the scanner, the temperature scanner, the installation cost, and training. Sheriff has informed us that the equipment will be installed on the community custody entrance of the facility, and will approve officer and inmate safety. It will also lessen the chance of an officer being exposed to the coronavirus. Sheriff Perry is asking the board to pay for this item using the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, funds that are made available to the county.
In the awarding of this contract, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we award a contract in the amount of $169,000 for the purchase of a second Intercept Contraband Detection Scanner to Tech 84 Incorporated.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor? It is six zero, Jennifer. 8C, an additional appropriation referencing Justice Assistance Grant for the sheriff's office. Mr. Hall.
Sheriff Perry is asking the board to appropriate grant funds in the amount of $16,743 received from the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant. The grant funds will be used for overtime hours to provide high-impact law enforcement activities in areas that are experiencing increases in crime. And Sheriff Perry is here. Should you have a question?
Okay, in regard to this JAG grant and additional appropriation, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move we appropriate the grant funds in the amount of $16,743 received from the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant to assist with overtime hours for the officers.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six zero, Jennifer. 8D, an additional appropriation referencing DMV traffic enforcement grants for the sheriff's office. Mr. Hall.
Sheriff Perry is asking the board to appropriate two separate grants from the Virginia Department of Motor Vehicles. The grants are pass-through funds received from the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration for FY '22. Sheriff's Office has been awarded the following grants. Number one, $26,400 for the enforcement of alcohol-related traffic laws. Grant number two, $17,831 for the enforcement of speed-related traffic laws. The grants will be used for training, equipment, and overtime compensation related to the enforcement of these laws. And Sheriff Perry is here. Should you have any questions?
Okay, in regard to this additional appropriation, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a recommendation that we appropriate the DMV grant for $26,400, $17,831, as outlined above.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six zero, Jennifer. 8E, an additional appropriation referencing the American Rescue Plan Act funds for the school board. Mr. Hall.
The school board is expected to receive an additional $1,371,949 from the Virginia Department of Education through the American Rescue Plan Act coronavirus and local physical recovery funds. According to school superintendent Sandy Strayer, the funds will be used to replace the heating, ventilation, and air conditioning in the HVAC system at Laurel Park Middle School.
In regard to this additional appropriation for the school board, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move the board to approve the additional appropriation of $1,371,949 to the school budget for the purpose indicated above.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six zero, Jennifer. 8F, an additional appropriation and award of contract referencing aerial fire apparatus of Public Safety Department. Mr. Hall.
Public Safety Director Matt Tatum is asking the board to appropriate $216,172 received from the Virginia Fire Program's Aid to Localities Fund. The funds will be combined with $929,000 previously appropriated by the Board of Supervisors to purchase a new aerial fire apparatus. In addition, Mr. Tatum is asking the board to award a contract in the amount of $1,136,761 to Blue Ridge Rescue Suppliers from Montvale, Virginia, for an E1 95-foot rear-mount platform aerial apparatus. The Emergency Services Advisory Council, or ESAC, concurs with using the Aid to Localities funds for this purchase and placing the new apparatus at Bassett Fire Department. And Mr. Tatum is with us. Should you have any questions?
The board has sufficient background material, including memo from Mr. Tatum's office. Would like, before we take any action, to recognize members of our fire department, from the Bassett Fire Department. We appreciate you all being here today. What is the pleasure of the board in regard to the appropriation and award of contract?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend appropriation of $219,172 and the award of contract in the amount of $1,136,761 for the purchase of a new aerial fire apparatus.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six zero, Jennifer. 8G, a request for carryover of FY '21 county funds. Mr. Hall.
Staff is asking the board to approve the carryover of committed funds from the FY '21 budget year to the current FY '22 budget. Staff has prepared the attached list of carryover items by cost center. Items on the carryover list are committed items encumbered or obligated from the prior budget year, but the item was not received or the service was not performed prior to June 30. It also includes unexpendited grant funds that may have been awarded in the prior fiscal year and other commitments not completed prior to June 30. This year's carryover request totals $51,136,064.58, which includes inter-fund transfers of $8,874,690.88. And we have attached you the working papers to the entire carryover list.
There's significant information breaking down all of this, with a good majority of it still encumbered for the adult detention center. Is that correct, Mr. Wagner?
That's correct.
With that, what is the board's action that they would like to take in regard to the request for carryover of FY '21 county funds?
Mr. Chairman, I move the board to approve the carryover funds to fiscal year '22, as requested.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six zero, Jennifer. Okay, you had an additional item added. 8H, an award of contract referencing paving of Dupont Road for the adult detention center. Mr. Hall.
As part of the ongoing construction of the new adult detention center, staff is asking the board to award a contract of $1,089,350 in the form of a change order to English Construction Company for the Dupont Road improvements. The project involves milling, paving, and striping the roadway to make it suitable for acceptance into the Virginia Department of Transportation's secondary road system. Funding for this work is included in the budget for the adult detention center project, and will be eligible for the 25% reimbursement from the Commonwealth.
Great. With that, additional financial, what is the pleasure of the board in regard to the awarding of this contract?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a recommendation of approval of the change order in the amount of $1,089,350 to English Construction Company Incorporated for the Dupont Road improvement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six zero, Jennifer. Agenda item number nine, a consideration of a resolution referencing the county's participation in the proposed settlement of opioid-related claims. Mr. Hall, are you taking this, or Ms. Lyles?
I can introduce it, and then we'll give it to Ms. Lyles. In May 2018, the board authorized legal action to recover damages on behalf of Henry County due to prescription opioid abuses. Multiple lawsuits eventually evolved into class action cases involving many localities and states. Several of the defendants being sued by Virginia localities over the manufacture, sale, and distribution of opioids have reached a proposed settlement. In July 2021, the board approved a settlement structure by which Henry County would share important of the proceeds with the Commonwealth and other localities. To participate in the settlement, Henry County must acknowledge its desire to participate by adopting the proposed resolution that's included in your packet. And Mr. Lyles is here. Should you have any specific questions?
Great. I think the board has had an opportunity to review this resolution, as well as we have been updated through the process of this. What action would the board like to take?
Mr. Chairman, I move for the adoption of the resolution authorizing the county's participation in the proposed settlement of opioid-related claims.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six zero, Jennifer. Agenda item number 10, informational items. We'll take comments from the board to begin with, beginning with Mr. Zare, if you have any.
No, sir.
Dr. Martin.
No, sir.
Mr. Bryant.
Yes, sir. Just one quick question, and my question's probably for Sheriff Perry. Just a quick question. Who are we to contact now on our trash enforcement and stuff like that now?
A gentleman named Jason Keller. He's lieutenant. We need to bring him over and introduce him to the board.
Okay.
Yes. This is Jason. He's been with us working for 20 years. He's oversaw investigations. And the gentleman, he will be overseeing the awards, then working school resource officer, then a community-oriented police officer, and the local enforcement regulations.
Okay.
Jason, if you'd like to. Do you have any questions with Jason?
No, I will hit him with some after we...
Will you provide us with a contact number?
Yeah, we need a contact number and stuff like that.
Yes, I'll make sure all y'all have my information. It's actually, my number is the same as Lieutenant Lawson, who just retired, and picked up his same number. And as well as Teddy Robinson. Y'all probably already have his information. Between the two of us, we'll walk out.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Bryant?
No, sir.
Liz Buchanan?
No, sir.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes. Sheriff, I don't know the circumstances, the bus crashes we've had back what we had, two weeks ago. But it looks like now there's more people on the telephones driving than ever before. Is there any charges being placed? Is there any court problems? You know, what's... I was stopped at an intersection coming over here. Four cars come out in front of me. Two out of the four were on the telephone. And I know from going down the road and getting behind these cars, and they're all over the road, and they're driving 10, 15 mile an hour, less than the speed limit, and when you pass them, that's what they got that phone talking. And, you know, my days, it was the eight-track tape players that caused all the wrecks. But now, I believe it's these telephones that everybody's minds are somewhere else.
Yes. And I will say that is one factor. I do think there's, yes, it is a problem we see in ourselves to say that we've had any charges per se, because I think you run into a couple of things when someone... I think people are somewhat observing around themselves when they see a marked police car. All of a sudden, there's things that do straighten up, you might say. Because driving an unmarked vehicle myself, I see a little bit more than... But with that, you know, also is some of the problems we have with substance abuse that I think is leading to some of our unsafe highways. But I think distracted driving and that, yes, the buses, the wrecking fatalities that we had in the last two or three weeks were very noticeable.
It just looks like a whole lot of it, and I haven't heard a lot of scuttlebutt about anybody being charged or anything. And I didn't know if it was one of those things that, you know, like the trash, throwing the trash out the window, that, you know, there's just not many charges placed, so, but, okay.
If I could, just for a second, Mr. Chairman, I noticed that the state police is not enforcing it either. Because I don't see anywhere where the state police is enforcing any of the cell phone ordinances that was passed here first year, making it illegal to talk on the phone. And I hadn't brought it up, but now that Mr. Slaughter's brought it up, you know, I'm in the same boat that he am. I'm concerned about, you know, if it is a law, then the state, because they're the highway, they monitor highway more than county does, it ought to be their responsibility to try to get out and push this more often than what's being done. So I'm just saying that we need to make it clear that, you know, that it is illegal. Because as Mr. Slaughter says, I've seen it multiple times where you pull up to the red light, and people will be on the phone, and then when the light changes green, they'll sit there for a few seconds, but they look up.
Right.
You know, unless you tap the horn.
Yes.
But, so...
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's it.
Anything else, Mr. Slaughter?
No, sir.
I don't have anything. Mr. Hall?
Yes, sir. I've got several things. Start with the one that's generating some attention. As you probably are aware, personal property bills have not gone out from the building yet. It's highly unusual for citizens to call and ask where their tax bills are. But I've gotten a lot of calls. You have in front of you a memo from Mr. Lyles that the bottom of that memo is a resolution. We are asking you to extend the tax payment deadline. But before you do that, I've asked Miss Love to be here to kind of explain myriad issues that have occurred that have gotten us into this situation. So I'd be delighted if you wouldn't mind coming up and briefly tell on the board what the situation and circumstances are.
This has been one of the worst years I've ever been in the tax office.
Can you, Ms. Love? I'm sorry, could you pull that mic down?
Can you hear me now?
A little better.
Okay. The year started out bad, as everybody knows, with COVID. And we had employees that were out sick. At one time, one week, there was only me, one other lady working in the office. We waited on all the customers, answered the phone, and knew everything. We... I'm not complaining. We're there to serve the public, and that's what we did. We got behind, and it looked like we just couldn't catch up. We were working hard. A lot of weeks, I worked seven days a week, staying there and kept trying to get it finished on time. We did have a hard time. And that's why I'm here to explain it to you. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
I guess.
And we did have one lady that had to go out on sick leave. And she was out from March 1st and just came back November 1st. And we did hold her job for her, because she'd been with us for quite a few years, and she was an excellent worker. So we did hold her job. And we did have one employee that quit during the middle of the year without a notice. And all of this just put us further behind. But I'm not complaining. And we did have one former employee that came back and worked part-time for us. And Amber, and she came back and she worked. And we did finally hire one new one that came in and stayed on and helped train. So we just got behind with it.
Ms. Love, if we adopt this to extend it to January 5th, now that's pretty much, as the saying goes, the drop dead date of having your taxes in. What is the expectation of getting these tax bills out? What date?
I think that Mr. Grinstaff, are they going out?
Yeah, the file is with the printer now. I'm hoping to have proof sometime this afternoon. So I'm thinking the latest will be mailed by the end of this week, so that will give us a good shot. I mean, we're this close to getting them mailed.
So we're close.
Are we going to advertise this? Are you putting it in the paper to let the people know that this is happening?
We hope so, and I'll give a brand.
I mean, you know, you need to make sure that the people and the public understand that there's been a... Because I'm actually getting phone calls too about leaving at night, that people want to know where the taxes is at, because people are used to getting their taxes at a certain time.
I bet I'm getting one.
I guarantee you are. But that's your job.
But we'll push the message out with Brandon and social media and standard media. We'll get that out.
Sure.
With the holidays coming up, and I'm sure people ordering taxes and stuff, it might be wise to extend it to about 60 days, make it like February 4th, just due to slowness of mail and whatnot.
I think January 5th will work for us.
What's that?
I think... I'm pretty confident January. If we get them out this week, January 5th will be good.
If we get them out this week, though.
Yeah, is that going to work for the public, not for you?
And then you have people trying to pay their bills over Christmas and stuff, so they're not late paying their bill. I just don't want to be penalized for something that's kind of falls back on us. So I'd make a motion that pursuant to Code of Virginia 58-1-3916, and for good cause, showing the deadline for the payment without penalty of 2021 tangible personal property and machine and tools tax in Henry County shall be extended from December 5th, 2021, to February 4th, 2022.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Discuss... Yeah, is that... Which I haven't promised that at all, I really don't. But is that going to cause a problem with the county by doing it, extending it out to February 4th? Is there going to be a problem?
You mean from a revenue standpoint?
Yeah.
I think we can handle it.
You think we can handle that all right? That's what I'm talking about, the revenue coming in. If we can handle everything and we're not... Then I don't have a problem with it.
I almost guarantee that it won't be an issue.
Okay.
Normally, you know, we're about close to writing 90% of the due date, so whatever the due date is, we'll be back up in that area. So I don't think we'll patch our budget.
Okay.
All right. Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Six zero.
Just so there's no confusion here, this is just personal problem. This is still a real estate act, too, just a little bit.
Correct, yeah. Thank you, Ms. Love.
Thank you.
Just a couple more items, Mr. Chairman. A reminder that we follow the state's holiday schedule, which means that we will close our building at noon tomorrow. And we will also be off Thursday and Friday, reopen, start a business on Monday. Another reminder that your December board meeting has been moved to December the 14th, and that is also the meeting that we traditionally swear in the elected officials, so plan on that happening that day as well. We always have a deadline of items for the agenda, so if anyone has an item for the agenda that you wish to add, we would ask that you get us that by noon on December the 7th, which is a week prior. We are now soliciting nominations for the Jack Dalton Community Service Award. That's available on our social media platforms and our website. We'll push that out even more strongly as we move through the month of December. And I know we've had a really good year with regard to economic development announcements, and the last one, I don't want it to get lost because it was just done with a press release, but the Vanity Fair Corporation is expanding its facility in the Patriot Center, $10.2 million capital investment, 82 new jobs for that facility. And it's a really good year when a press release covers $10.2 million and 82 new jobs, but then we'll lose sight of that. The paperwork, as you know, with some of these announcements, the paperwork has begun to trail the announcement a little bit just because of the availability. We hope that that Commonwealth Opportunity Fund document, the performance agreement, will be finalized within the next week or so, so we will probably bring that to you on December 14th for your approval. The COF is $225,000. The county has no money in it other than the statutory enterprise zone incentive stuff. It's a fairly simple document, but transition enrichment and a lot of folks moving on probably from the new, from the current administration, some things have been delayed, so we're just trying to get the document done, and we'll get it to you soon.
Anything else, Mr. Hall?
No, sir.
Agenda item number 11, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed meeting. If someone will cite the items to go into closed meeting, also inclusive that we will invite Supervisor-Elect Garrett Dillard to closed session as well.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board convene in closed meeting under 2.23711A1 for discussion of appointees to the Blue Ridge Regional Library Board, the Public Service Authority, the Southern Area Agency on Aging, and West Piedmont Planning District Commission. 2.23711A7 for discussion of pending legal matters. 2.23711A3 for discussion of acquisition, disposal of real estate, and 2.23711A5 for discussion of as-yet-unannounced industries, and 2.23711A1 for discussion of personnel matters.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor is six... I got a delay right there. Six zero. See everyone upstairs in just about five minutes. Be canon second by Mr. Slaughter. Mr. Bryant, will you pull the board?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Mr. Zare, I believe that you have an appointment for the Public Service Authority for the board's consideration.
Yes, sir. I move that the board reappoint Vivian Harrison to a four-year term on the Public Service Authority Board, expiring on January 5th, 2026.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor is six zero. Mr. Bryant, I believe that you have two appointments to the West Piedmont Planning District Commission for the board's consideration.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we reappoint Jim Adams and Tommy Slaughter to the West Piedmont Planning District Commission for the length of four years. Expration date's going to be December 31st of 2025.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor is six... It was five in a reluctant hand, but it did go up.
They've done a good job.
We call five and a half.
Mr. Hall, do you have any business for the board prior to taking a recess?
No, sir.
Board members, do you have any?
Sure.
We'll stand in recess till our 6:00 PM session begins. I'll call this 6:00 PM session of the November 23rd, 2021 meeting of the Henry County Board of Supervisors back to order from our recess. I'd like to welcome all of our visitors. Remind you, if you want to address the board specifically, you must sign up seven days in advance to be put on the agenda. The county administrator is the contact person for the board. However, the public may address the board under the agenda item, matters presented by the public later in this meeting tonight. Again, everyone welcome. Thank you for coming out and participating in your county government. Our first item of business is agenda item number 12, general highway matters. We have David Kausen with B. Doc with us. David?
Good evening. I'd like to give you an update on the Collinsville Safety Pedestrian Project. We've got it under construction now, building out the sidewalk, and we'll be scheduled for the pedestrian activation contract or to do that work soon. So that project is now underway. As far as any kind of updates, that's all I have for you. And then we have the...
We know we have a resolution. Does anyone else have anything for David?
I just want to thank you, Vida, for finally getting to that project. It's a long-meeted project in the Collinsville District, and where it's at right there is a must-needed crosswalk, you know, for the safety of pedestrians, especially during the race weekends and stuff like that, where you've got so many people crossing the road right there. I think it's going to, you know, be a benefit, a big benefit to the Collinsville District.
David, on Lee Ford Camp Road, you've resurfaced that road. It still needs the white lines.
Okay.
If you could add that to the list, please.
Should be happening soon, but I'll make sure.
Okay, are there other items?
David, are y'all doing any shoulder work now with the pavement? Looks like it's broke off in so many places, and drops down four or six inches. I don't know, graveling or torn gravel or whatever you're going to...
We have not a whole lot now with it getting cold. I know we'll be doing more in the spring. If you've got specific ones for us to look at, we can... I can see those plans to get off.
I'll give you a call in.
Okay.
Other items? 12A is a consideration of a resolution supporting the addition of airport road to secondary road system and abandonment of the old road. Mr. Hall?
As part of the expansion project of Blue Ridge Regional Airport, a portion of airport road has been realigned, and the new section has been constructed. Therefore, as an administrative matter, the board must pass a resolution asking the Virginia Department of Transportation to accept the new road into the secondary road system and abandon the old portion, and you have a proposed resolution within your working papers.
Ms. Buchanan, this is in your district. You want to lead into this?
Sure. If you haven't been out to the airport, the landscape has certainly changed and for the better. And I know that we're very excited about what will be happening there at the airport. So, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we approve the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor is six zero. Michelle? Agenda item number 13, we have matters presented by the public. I'm going to read a brief policy statement that will encompass all of our public hearings tonight. We have numerous public hearings in regard to rezoning and all the way through to agenda item 20. So this is time for public comment. We welcome your participation in tonight's meeting. We're here to listen to you. If you care to address the board, come to the podium, state your name, subject matter, and the district in which you live. By coming to the podium, you have agreed that you will exhibit respect for the board and its members. You will receive the same consideration from the board. Please try to keep your presentation three to five minutes. Matters presented by the public outside of any of the other public hearing, is there anyone wishing to address the board under matters presented by the public? Seeing no indication as such, we will go to agenda item 14, public hearing and a consideration of a resolution referencing the community development block grant application for the restoration of the historic Fieldale Recreation Center. Mr. Hall?
In March, the county applied for a community development block grant to fund the restoration of the historic Fieldale Recreation Center. Unfortunately, that grant was not selected for funding. Staff plans to apply for funding again in the upcoming grant cycle. As part of the grant process, the board must hold a public hearing to allow citizens the opportunity to comment on the CDBG grant proposal to be submitted for the project. The public hearing has been advertised and scheduled for tonight. In addition, the staff is asking the board to adopt the proposed resolution, which is included in your working papers, in support of the application. If funded, the grant will provide up to $1 million toward the renovation of that facility.
Okay, I will open the public hearing to take input on this at 6:06. Is there anyone wishing to address the board during this public hearing in regard to this grant application? Seeing no indication as such, I will close the public hearing at 6:06. Ms. Buchanan, this as well is in your district.
Exactly, and I'm excited about that, too. I do want to compliment Lee Clark and Mary Ann Mason for the great job that they're doing, moving this project forward. Mary Ann is great with working grants, and the volunteers there in Fieldale have been very excited about what's happening. And so, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we approve and support the CDBG grant application.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor is six zero. Michelle? Agenda item number 15, public hearing for rezoning application R-21-18. Lisa Lancaster, we have with us our Director of Planning and Zone, Mr. Lee Clark. Mr. Clark?
Good evening. Property is located at 246 Meadowlands in the Collinsville District, tax map number 29441 Lot 1. The applicant here is requesting the rezoning of this property from suburban residential district to office and professional district B3. The owner wishes to convert the existing residence into an office or counseling business. Following the public hearing, both the planning commission and staff recommended approval of this request.
Okay, I will open the public hearing to take input on this at 6:07. Is there anyone desiring to speak on this rezoning application? Seeing no indication as such, I will close the public hearing at 6:07. Mr. Bryant, I believe this is in your district?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, and I also don't have any problems with that, and I'd make a recommendation that we rezonate the request to be approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor is six zero. Michelle? Agenda item number 16, public hearing for rezoning application R-21-19. Jason E. and Pamela K. Mayberry. Mr. Clark?
Okay, this property is located at 2541 Bassett Drive Road in the Recrete District. Tax map number is 15346 Lot 75X. The applicant here is requesting the rezoning of just over two and a half acres from suburban residential district to mixed residential district. The applicant wishes to place a double-digit manufactured home on this property on a permanent masonry foundation. Following the public hearing, both the planning commission and staff also recommend approval of this request.
I will open the public hearing to take input on this at 6:09. Is there anyone desiring to speak on this rezoning application? Seeing no indication as such, I will close the public hearing at 6:09. Mr. Slaughter, I believe this is in your district?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have no problems with the rezoning. I'd approve.
All right. We'll accept that as a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? All in favor is six zero. Michelle? Agenda item number 17, public hearing for rezoning application R-21-20, Carver Memorial Gardens. Mr. Clark?
This property is located in the southeast corner of the intersection of Carver Road and Parkway Drive in the Horseback Street District. Tax map number is 40.849 Lot A, and the applicant is requesting the rezoning of approximately 2.85 acres from commercial district B1 to agricultural district A1. The applicant wishes to expand the adjacent cemetery onto this property. Once rezoned and approved special use permit is also required, and a meeting before the BZA for that special use permit is scheduled for tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM. Following the public hearing, both the planning commission and staff recommend approval of this request.
I will open the public hearing at 6:10 to take input. Is there anyone desiring to comment on this rezoning application? Seeing and hearing no one indicating as such, I will close the public hearing at 6:11. Ms. Buchanan, this as well is in your district.
It is. Mr. Chairman, I move that the rezoning request be approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor is six zero. Michelle? Agenda item number 18, public hearing for rezoning application R-21-21. Dana S. Wade. Mr. Clark?
This property is located at the former 107 Carson Drive. It's in the Recrete District. Tax map number is 15718 Lot 5. The applicant here is requesting the rezoning of approximately three tenths of an acre from suburban residential district to rural residential district, and the applicant wishes to allow for the placement of a single-wide
to allow for the placement of a single A manufactured home. Following the public hearing, both the planning commission and staff recommend approval of this request.
I'll open the public hearing to take input on this at six eleven. Is there anyone desiring to comment on this rezoning application? Seeing no indication as such, I will close the public hearing at six twelve. Mr. Slaughter, this as well is in your district.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the planning commission's recommendation in rezoning the property.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six zero, Michelle. Agenda item number nineteen, public hearing for a budget amendment related to the sale of the Patriot Center Shell Building. Mr. Hall.
The Patriot Center Shell Building was sold to Shock Incorporated for one million dollars as part of an economic incentive package in exchange for the company making capital investments of eighty-five million dollars and creating three hundred and fifty-five new jobs. The loan value of the building was three million four hundred sixty-one thousand nine hundred and fifty-five dollars. Because the accounting of this transaction exceeded one percent of the total county budget, the board must hold a public hearing before approving the appropriation needed to reflect this transaction on the county's financial statements. Public hearing has been properly advertised and scheduled for tonight.
I will open the public hearing at six thirteen to take input on this item. Is there anyone desiring to comment during the public hearing time on this item? Seeing no indication as such, I will close the public hearing at six thirteen. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, quick question. Is it not thirty-three hundred and fifty-five new jobs?
Yeah, there's a typo. I read it as three fifty-five.
Just want to make clear that it is a typo. Correct. Mr. Chairman, I'd make a recommendation that we approve the additional appropriations related to the sale of the Patriot Center Shell Building.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six zero, Michelle. I realize that we've had numerous zoning and other public hearings. If you desire to leave the meeting at any time tonight, please do so respectfully of others. We still have one more public hearing tonight. Agenda item number twenty, a public hearing in regard to the voluntary settlement agreement. Mr. Hall, Mr. Lyle, I'm not sure which one of you is taking this one.
I'll let Mr. Lyle take the lead.
The next common plated action of the Martinsville Henry County Voluntary Settlement Agreement process is for the board of supervisors to hold a public hearing and then consider adopting an ordinance that approves the voluntary settlement agreement as approved by the Virginia Commission on Local Government. While the Commission on Local Government made recommendations, the Commission made no changes to the agreement as approved by the city and county in August. The public hearing was advertised for tonight, and following this evening's hearing, the board can consider adopting the attached ordinance. The city of Martinsville has scheduled public hearings and is considering similar actions. If both parties adopt ordinances of approval, the approval of the agreement will be filed with a local circuit court, and a special court will be impaneled to further consider the matter. And since I wrote this memo, my understanding is the city has adopted the ordinance approving the offer of settlement.
Mr. Hall, do you have anything to add? Okay, I will open the public hearing at six fifteen to take input on this item. How many desire to speak in regard to this? I say one hand, two hands, three hands? Okay, we should be able to manage the time very well. I think I saw Ms. Martin's hand first, if you would like to come up.
Good evening, and I'd like to start off and wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and a Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
My biggest wish right now for this year and my Christmas, my Christmas wish, would be for this voluntary agreement to be shredded and used for confetti at the New Year's Eve party. And with that, I wish you all well.
Mr. Phillips, I saw your hand next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just briefly say, you know, I think we have, you know, you got a lot of work into this. I know it's been, you know, a lot of legalese and a lot of advice from outside council and different things like that, and it's been hashed and rehashed. And again, I know none of the situations that you ever arrive at of this magnitude are simple or easy, so I do, you know, understand that, understand the financial implications of fighting it, understand the financial implications of signing off tonight. I would just simply urge you to delay. That's been my personal thought process on this for some time. I met with all three of our delegates this past week. I never brought up reversion, not a single time in those conversations, but it was brought up to me by one of our delegates, and he said, Eric, it's not over. I've already spoken. This delegate said, Stan Marshall, said he spoke with Senator Stanley, and that they both plan to bring up new legislation now that the Republicans have a majority in the House of Delegates and a federal governor on that side. They both think that it has a chance of allowing people at least have a voice. Most people don't understand the legislation that we brought last time was for the city residents to have a referendum, because, you know, there's a lot of pushback and feedback, even in the city at this point. Once people really understood the impact and what it may do with their school system and other things, people started tuning into it a little more. I think they got a little more vocal. So, it would be my personal fault and preference for you guys to not approve that tonight and to allow it to be delayed. It may be inevitable. It may happen. They may fail, but at least it gives time. And secondly, the city also has what I would call a people's referendum coming up this coming year with city council elections. So, that gives an opportunity for the city, now that they're tuned into what's going on, to have the ability to have candidates who represent both sides of that issue. They could have candidates who are in favor of it, they could have candidates who are against it, and then we can see how the city really felt about it from the resident side. So, with that, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the time. Thank you all, and have a great night.
Mr. Palmer, I believe I saw your hand.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Hall, Andrew Palmer, residing in the Collinsville District, and just would like to just say a couple of comments that, over the past six months, spoke to lots of residents in the Collinsville District who were against reversion, and then a lot of, as Mr. Phillips mentioned, a lot of residents in the city are now tuning in that they think this is a bad thing. And I know that we've had two supervisors who have voted against this settlement agreement, and I would hope that tonight, my prayer would be that we have a third one that joins that team, and we can stop this and delay the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there others desiring to speak? Mr. Reynolds.
Appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak. Like Mr. Palmer did a lot of door knocking, had a lot of people upset by reverse. One thing I want to do, compliment Ms. Buchanan for getting the road fixed over, winning for the old road. Truck drives a lot better than that, I want to thank you. Congratulate Joe winning his seat, and just the reversion has so many people so angry because of what's gonna happen to taxes. And yesterday, you saw what Pennsylvania County did with the reassessment. I mean, it's twenty-five percent more. And today, I've had my phone ring off the hook talking about is this gonna happen in Henry County with reversion. So, my thing is, my hope is we will have another person vote against it so we can stop it. We got elections coming up in the city. I think you're gonna see two new council members, and once you do that, the city's gonna stop it. And that means if we can stop it now, from what I understand, we might save about six million dollars next couple of years, and then if the city stops it next year, and then with the legislation that we've got now, with the Republicans in control, and with Eric Phillips over here having some connections, I think we can save Henry County from annexation. And the city is the one that's got the problem, their financial problems, they got the infrastructure problems. If they got the problems and they're broke, we should be able to exonerate them. We shouldn't have to give them what they want. We should be able to take what they got. If they got the problems, we gotta save them. We should exonerate them into our system and just consolidate everything. Should be one large county. But that's my input, that's what I think, and I want to thank all of you for the job you've done. Jim, I want to tell you one more time about your mom. You know, you've been a friend of mine a long time. She was a good woman, and congratulate you also. Thank you.
Is there anyone else desiring to speak during this public hearing? Seeing no indication of anyone else desiring to speak, I will close the public hearing at six twenty-two. Mr. Hall, do you have anything to add before I take comments from the board? Okay, comments from the board?
I mean, I'll just start off. I think everybody knows that most everybody on the board of supervisors has been against reversion the whole time. It's not something that we can control, so to speak. The aspects, all it takes is a vote by city council to revert, and then it's a done deal. So, there's nothing we can do to stop it, except hope that new members are elected to city council, and then they change their mind ultimately. Not a fan of the process at all. The archaic laws in Virginia allow for behind-the-scenes negotiation with the mediator from the state, municipal, local government. I mean, maybe those laws can be changed, I don't know. We do have new leadership in Richmond, so we'll cross our fingers. One big concern I have currently is that I feel like if we started the process today, the whole reversion, there's no way we can merge the schools, the constitutional offices in a year and a half. There's no way it can be done by 2023. But, yeah, it's a lot to take in.
Thank you. Dr. Morton.
I think it goes without saying, and I want to echo some of the things of my colleagues, my colleague here. I never thought that five individuals could take a vote and change the course of history for an entire community. That piece and how the state has designed the process is beyond what I ever thought would be possible. And part of that process hurts me more as an educator who believes in a collaborative process to reach a decision. And in this process, we had to, we were forced to make decisions in isolation, without public comment and without public input. But what hurts me more as an educator, the two largest employers in our community were never asked to come to the table. And then we are asked now to make these decisions. At one point in this process, I thought that a compromise might have been for us to extend a hand out and say, can we just put the two school systems together and see how it goes from there? Then the city can maintain its identity and its brand, and then we move forward. And it would take a lot of time for us to do school systems and put them together. But I think we could, during that process, learn from each other about how we were moving forward, how we could move forward. And that's it.
Thank you, Dr. Morton. Mr. Bryant.
Well, most everyone here knows my feelings about the reversion. I had an opportunity several years ago to talk to one of the city council members. At the time, he was the chairman of the city council. And I asked him, I said, what is it that the city wants from the county in this reversion? I said, would it not be like Dr. Barton just said? Would it not be beneficial for us to work and take over the school systems, to save you probably seven to eight million dollars? And then talk about possibly doing the jail systems as time goes on and other things, not trying to consolidate it all in one big package, but to try to break it down in individual packages? And his comment to me was, Mr. Bryant, it's not all about reversion. And what leads me to believe, and what I have talked to the other members also, is that it's not about reversion as much as it's about annexation. We did a memorandum of understanding that at least by this time of about ten years after the reversion starts, to come up with a solution on the school systems and so forth, and also what's gonna be incorporated in on the annexation. My thing is, is I don't think it's fair for the county, and all that we have done over the many years that Henry County's been a county, is to let a city come in and take over our property. I just don't see it. Now, Virginia, on the other hand, sees no problem in that, that the city has a right to come in and annex up to ten mile radius of the city limits, which I hope, as one of the speakers said tonight, that we have a new government in Virginia now. It's led by Republicans now, and we have a Republican governor, that maybe some things will change, and that maybe that we can somehow stop this reversion from happening. Either way, we're not gonna stop it if the city don't want to stop it. If the city wants to proceed with it, the city's gonna proceed with it, no matter the vote that we do tonight, the city's gonna proceed with the reversion part on it. But, having said that, a new election year is coming up for the city. Having said that, there may be possible that we would have some new members on the city board that would feel like the city got a shady deal on this, that they was not informed, just as the citizens of Henry County wasn't informed on the consequences of the reversion, and how it's gonna affect the city residents, and how it's gonna affect the county residents. It's gonna affect the city, and it's gonna affect the county. There's no way possible that we can do it without it affecting both sides. As we have talked about it here, you've heard us say that nobody here in the county board of supervisors want to see our taxes raised, period. Number one is because we have to pay taxes out of our own pocket, too. When I raise taxes, when we raise taxes, it comes out of our pockets also. But the fact is, we've already projected that we're gonna have to raise taxes if we're gonna have a balanced budget. There's just no way we can do it. I've never, ever been one to have somebody to try to stick something down my throat, to try to force something down my throat and say, you take it and don't say anything about it. I'm against this reversion. I've been against it when I come on the board. I'm against it now. I'll be against it when I get out of office. I think it's a bad deal for the county. I wish and pray that the city would somehow, some way, see, as Dr. Martin just said, how five city council members can change history and affect not only the city but the county in the decisions that they make. And that's all I got to say.
Ms. Buchanan.
Well, I think I've been very vocal in regard to reversion and annexation, and I agree with the other board members here. Five city council people not choosing to allow the people that they represent an opportunity to vote on it is wrong. It's also wrong, and it's archaic, that our law does not allow the residents of Henry County to be able to vote on it. But again, the city had that opportunity. They did not want to. They did not want to hear from their citizens. My thoughts are still the same. Reversion is not going to be financially good for the citizens of Henry County. Your taxes are going up. That's just a fact, and it's nothing we can do about it, and it's not fair. It's not fair when you work all your life to own a little piece of property, you know, a little house, a piece of land, and through no choice of your own, those taxes are going up. And, you know, there's nothing more that I can really say about it, other than it's not, it's not fair to the And, you know, there's nothing more that I can really say about it, other than it's not, it's not fair to the citizens of the city of Martinsville. Because I said this earlier, unemployment is real. And we have some good professional people in the city of Martinsville that are going to lose their job. We work hard to try to recruit professionals to this area. So they have some options. They can certainly choose another job. They can drive further to find a job that fits their education. But it's a process that is not fair. And that's all I can say.
Thank you. Mr. Slaughter.
I guess if anything said is just what Deborah just said, it's unfair. It's, but you got to weigh the thing. Do we fight it and spend a lot of money and end up it happening anyway? Or do we try to get the best we can and go with it? So I'm not for it. I never have been for it either. But, and I definitely don't want to see the taxes go up, but I know it's going to have to happen. So I've told a lot of people, it's like going in and sitting down to a restaurant. And you order something, and they bring you out something that you don't want, but you got to eat it. It's the way I look at this thing. We're having to eat it, and we got no choice. So do we fight it now and take a chance on somebody else getting elected that would go against it? Or do we accept what we've got, which is 10 years against the annexation versus two years? Do we take a chance on a new governor and a new house? If we had both houses, you know, I might feel a little more strongly about it. But, you know, I don't know what they're going to be able to do in Richmond and what they're going to do. So it's just a bad situation for us. That's it. That's all I'm saying.
Pretty much all the way down the line, I don't think anyone could disagree with certain aspects. It's tremendously an unfair deal. The state has this set up this way, and the county really has little or no input. I agree with parts of what every one of you have said. It's a bad deal. I don't think anybody went into this situation thinking, oh, yeah, we want reversion. No. But it is the thing before us. Mr. Slaughter, as you're saying, if we move against this memorandum of understanding, we lose everything that we've negotiated. But we have to be prepared at that point in time to fight it out, as the saying goes. But I think we've talked about the ifs and buts a fair amount over the last number of months as to the counties being put in a unfair position. And I agree with every one of you that said unfair, because it is tremendously unfair. Anything from staff at all before we? Okay? Okay, that takes us as to what is the desire of this board? Is there any motion? I'll ask once again, is there any motion? Seeing no indication as such, this matter is table for lack of a motion. Everyone have a good evening.